We have had a couple additions, just to note, under the consent agenda, five point one one. And also on your new business, seven point five. We just want to make note of that. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the additions?
I'll make the motion.
Carmel motioned, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark, second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All same side, motion carried. Is there any public comment? This month, moving along to the consent agenda, again, five point one was increased or was added. Kim, do you want to just share a little bit about the, what that means, just increasing this time?
Yeah, Al Rizzo already does some extra special ed stuff for us and we've had some new specialized kids move in, so we just want to increase this.
Any other questions about the consent agenda? Anybody want anything pulled off for further discussion?
And that is just for this year, for right now.
Yep, thank you. Not hearing anything, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Carmel motioned, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kim, Mark, all in favor, John? Oh, John, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All same side. Committee reports. For communication, Jim, Mr. Trulock.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Guys, received my report, so I don't have to go through too much, but a lot of dates and things like that. Just to highlight today, for the girls tennis team, we did send six individuals to Sioux Falls and they left yesterday to be able to get a, some practice time. State High School even does not allow us to do anything on Sundays, so basically all the sections got together and based and figured out a way that they could have a little practice time in the indoor arena. So every school had a parent volunteer to go to the arena during their assigned time, so the kids could play on their own, no coaching whatsoever. Our coaches did not attend, but a parent went with the six people. And again, every single school that was attending got some time at that youth nurse center or whatever it is, tennis court arena. Today, we did have six people, Ava Jansen, Lilian Pauling, were playing singles and they both lost the first round and no, I forgot. Excuse me, Iris Dunner, who was her partner?
Anna Jansen.
Anna Jansen, yep, Anna Jansen and Iris, they lost first round and Corey Eileen and Kylie Precker, they played also at doubles and they were the 10 seed and upset seven first round and then they went on and played an undefeated two seed for Monty and lost, but we don't have many seniors, maybe two?
Yep.
Two seniors, so the numbers are okay and hopefully a good experience for them, but their, our tennis season ended today. Then you'll see the football dates coming up, it'll be the high seed. Tend to me, it looks like we're gonna play, go to Canby. Looks like that'll be four, will be five, but again, that's tense at this point. You see the volleyball dates there. Up board, again, we should be one of the higher seeds, so I'm assuming on October 24th, we're gonna end up hosting here at McCray and that'll be our last home meet. We do have a meet tonight at Bold and an away meet tomorrow. Left me right now where we're at, but tomorrow night and then our regular season ends. We had a heck of a, you'll see through the pictures, that I just took a couple pictures of the crowd. We had a full gym at the volleyball match last week against CMCS and that was for the Camden North title and it went to the fifth set and we lost. So CMCS will be hosting Canby, believe it or not. They beat the number one team in state Miniota, so Canby is the South Champions and who we beat earlier in the year and then we go into CMCS again, it hasn't come out officially, but that's what I see is happening. But we will now be in the Camden Finals for, first time for quite a while. It was, like I said, was as close as it could be, so the next match after tomorrow night will be Friday, October 24th, most likely here. Across country, you see we have a few pictures there of some of our cross-country runners, a few of the girls, a few of the boys, the young man. I guess all three of the young men are at McCray and then we have two of the girls. Or one of the girls are McCray and the other ones are RCW, but we have ten total runners from McCray and they have seven from RCW. Our numbers have increased drastically and talking to Coach Johnson, he thinks we're gonna have maybe another seven or eight up next year, so we might be pushing the upper, upper teens and that'll be, it's been quite a while since our numbers have gone like that. Remind me of the young man in the center, what was his name?
Sincere.
Sincere is a seventh grader. Ben Johnson talked to me about him about three weeks ago, he was just blowing people out of the water in the junior high tournament as a seventh grader, or in the runs. And he goes, what do you think about moving to seventh grader? I said, from what I saw today, he should be running varsity. And it just, because otherwise he's got nobody out front pushing him. And at this varsity meet out of between thirty and forty varsity boy runners, he took second place. So he's, he's really super fast, but if you move on, then you'll see number two, we have musical dates on there. You know, if you guys can make it out, I know they always appreciate it, sports get a lot of attention, so if we can also support the fine arts. There's three options there for you to make it to. We are starting junior high basketball, boys basketball already on the 28th, we still have split season. After Christmas, the girls will start, I'm just finishing up their schedule, I'm trying to get a few more games in there, but we, we have twelve to fifteen games in that short time period of time, so it's a lot of playing. Dance practice also begins here on the 20th and we'll go back and forth. On Mondays, we normally go practice at RCW and then on the other days, they practice in the shelter gym until Wednesdays are a real problem for us because nobody has events. So sometimes I have to take them out to the gym and they have to be in the commons, which isn't ideal with those hard top floors. But get everybody into a practice space, we have to do that. You can see on the last page here, we add the participation numbers, you can follow a grade all the way through from seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade and so on, to see what percentages have stayed involved with, with different activities. And then up on top, you can also see how many we have out by grade for each sport. Again, we do not allow sixth grade. That is, it's almost impossible to do that in basically conference-wide now. We've had a few schools over the years that includes sixth graders in different events like junior high golf, cross-country, but now that they moved ninth grade, Minnesota State High School League had taken charge of the ninth grade. There's a lot of times these teams are together, so we're, nobody could legally have a sixth grader included anymore. If it used to just be a seventh and eighth grade event, you could do that. A team could bring sixth graders up if their school allowed it. But now that so many of these were, where we don't truly have a junior high golf, we don't truly have junior high cross-country, we truly don't, we don't truly have junior high golf, because those sports all practice together seven through twelve, which now puts them under Minnesota State High School League governance, so it's not legal for us to allow sixth graders to participate. Even if we go to an event, we've had some other non-public schools that try to do that, they cannot do that any longer. So, thanks for approving the winter coaches, yourself, Kim added, one more today. Aliyah Toronies from RCW has been added as a volunteer and I'm still working on my junior high basketball coaches. I do have a few applicants and working on it, but I'll try to have that confirmed for the next board meeting. But Christopher's still been working as a trainer, she comes once a week if needed, we do usually. Most of the activities, other than volleyball, because Tori is a licensed physical therapist, she can take care of her, her own athletes if she needs to, but but Heather does regularly see junior high volleyball, cross-country, tennis players and football players on a regular basis. She stops in once a week and then she is traveling to our football games and home games. And then she will do her home dance meet, this year we're having a home wrestling match. Since our numbers are increasing, we're looking at possibly having upper teams of wrestlers this year, where three years ago we had two. So, four years ago, we had two. So she is also gonna come when we host that triangular here in December. And then lastly, as I sent you guys out a heads up, because tomorrow's the deadline for to have a dissolution of a co-op, which we want to dissolve the co-op with Marshall and Wilmer has agreed to allow us to join them for hockey. We did try New London Spicer, that was the student's choice, because that's where that student has moved to. Last year they lived by Grant Falls, so the marshal wasn't a bad trip. Now that this student has moved, he still is a student at McCray, but now that he's moved up and living in New London Spicer, that drive was too much and he was actually probably not gonna go out and that, and he is a very good hockey player. So they just this week agreed to it. And it'll be the same type of agreement as we had, as we have with Marshall and it's the same type of agreement that we have for, for gymnastics, that they will come up with the expenses and the family is going to pay that and obviously he will drive himself each day to practice, it's on the way home anyway. We did, the reason I sent that out is because we need signatures and Julie was gone and Deb is busy tomorrow, we have to have the state high school league tomorrow and they needed to approve at their board meeting tonight, so we did pre-sign. Since we didn't really hear back that there was any problem with it, we could always pull out if, if, if there was, but we did pre-sign so they could have it at their board meeting. Lastly, we did have, today, we got our sound system fixed in the gym, so it's really exciting that after the whole season's done, it works. Because, and the thing is, I, I just wanted you guys to know, I did that on purpose, because I wanted people to complain to me about it every single event. So I chose to have that sound system not work the whole season, because it was really fun getting text messages, complaints about it every night. And so come basketball, I'll see if I break it again. But they came in today and they got it fixed and it sounds fantastic and we tried every part of it. And it was just luck of the draw, the, the mixer inside the amp and it just, they thought it was a subwoofer and all tests. They could not figure that out and one person at Dectronics said, we've had one other school that's had this issue. Let's get that part and that's what we've been waiting for, for three weeks, it was a back order and they brought it today and that was the part. And they, so I'm really excited that that's been a work for basketball. And I am gonna ask for them to extend, we paid for one-year warranty, which I think is unfair, because the whole year it hasn't worked. So I think, I, I'm really gonna push that we get an extension of one-year full warranty with it working in case something shows up. Because I don't think this first year was, well, it was fair, because this would have been six, eight thousand dollars of probably repairs, but I really think now that since it only worked about five events a cover, we need a warranty. That is what I have, if you guys have questions.
Any questions for Jim? Thanks for advocating.
Yes.
Appreciate that. All right, Mr. Bertram.
All right, thank you, good evening. I'll briefly go through kind of the really busy first month of the school year. Then I want to spend some time just kind of going over the Minnesota MTSS system, Mr. Holmes asked me just to kind of share what that kind of system is and how we use it here. Just to recap really quick about this month, we've had bus safety. We've had walk and bike to school. We had an assembly for our fourth and fifth graders. We had field trips to the amazing farm, Pumpkin Patch, we had parent-teacher conferences. We had a very busy homecoming week, you're seeing some photos of that, and then also fire prevention week. And then in the middle, we had the great fortune of having Parents Club bring in the planetariums, they bring in a big dome and then kids get a chance to go inside and study the stars, so a really cool experience for them. And it stays busy, coming up, we have the book fair. And then also our third graders get a chance to go to Wilmer to see the orchestra perform. So lots of great opportunities for our kids outside the classroom and outside of our community ad times. All right, this may get a little dry, so if you have questions or hesitate to stop me, but we're gonna talk about the Minnesota MTSS, or multi-tiered system of supports. And it probably goes back about twenty years and what was originally called Respond to Intervention. So sometimes you still hear that in schools, that RTI, and that was basically an academic program that used data to kind of differentiate instruction for students. And in about 2012, 2013, so about a dozen, dozen years ago, the state wanted to expand this, they wanted to do more than just academics. This is before COVID. They wanted to look at social and emotional learning, they wanted to look at behavior, they wanted to look at attendance. So I, I put a sheet in your booklet, I'm sure you guys all read through and studied it, probably highlighted it all up, right? So lots of good stuff on kind of what this is. So it's really, it's a framework, it's not so much a program or class, it's just a way to look at all, all of your kids and then an inclusive environment and then use data to drive those decisions. So how do we get that data? Well, we collect surveys at the beginning, at the end of the year, to see how our kids feel, do they feel safe? Do they have friends? Do they have connections? And then from that, we use that to kind of guide the programming that we do. We do character education one day each week in every classroom and that continues throughout the entire school year. For behavior, we focus on that PBIS system, so we want to have that positive connection. Now, we're trying to get kind of that ten to one, we're well beyond that, so we want to have ten good things for every one kind of corrective behavior that has to happen. So we want to kind of recognize what's going well and use that to inspire our kids. There are times when a consequence is needed, there is still punishments and corrective behavior that happens, but we try to drive it with that positive interaction. So we do that through pride tickets and drawings and we use that for our Wolverine Way. That takes place at the end of each quarter. Then, of course, academics. So if you look towards the bottom, you talk about a tier one, a tier two and a tier three. So tier one is really what we're focusing a lot on this year, that's where every student gets that direct in instruction. All right, so that should be, all, all of our kids get it. And if things are really clicking and we're not quite there yet, but we're working towards, we want about eighty percent of our kids to be in there and stay there. Right? Tier two is gonna be that intervention gap. So at tier two, is we're gonna provide some small group interventions, we're gonna find different ways to teach it that will connect with those learning styles, right? If things are clicking, that's probably ten to fifteen. For us, that's a little bit large. And then tier three is gonna be that really specific intervention, so it's kind of the last kind of chance for us to make those connections and hopefully interventions that help kids grow academically before we get into special education test. So that would kind of be the process that goes with that. And again, the goal there would be to have about five or ten percent of your kids there. And we're, we're pretty close to that, it's that tier two group that's a little bit larger that we're working on it. And although it may sound out of order, the tier one, good tier one instruction will limit the number of kids that need that tier two. So because our tier two is a little larger, that doesn't mean that those interventions aren't working. It's just that we have more kids in that group that we're trying to, to slow that process down. So those would be the academic behavior and then the social and emotional components that go with it. And then the bottom part, I just added, why, why does this matter? So kind of the nuts and bolts for, for you, if anyone asks you, what's going on? Well, we're using kind of our, our win time, it's what I need time in both math and then reading, we're really focusing on phonics. You've heard me talk about that with our kindergarten, first grade, third grade and expanding up into fourth grade somewhat. And that's our chance to hit those tier one, but also tier two and tier three take place during that time as well. It's a way for us to connect with the whole child, not just the academic part, but the social and emotional learning, the behavioral component that goes with it. And then it just kind of promotes all of our students, whether they're special ed, EL, tier three, tier two, tier one. So the state doesn't require this, but the guidelines that they put into place strongly encourage you to use this system. Because they want us to use data to drive those decisions and this is exactly what we're doing. For the academics, that data comes from classroom teachers, assessments, FastBridge, progress monitoring that takes place, then of course the MCAs at the end of, end of each year. The behavior comes through referrals and then the same thing with our social and emotional learning that takes place there. So again, not something that we have to do, but all schools are using some component of this to use that data to drive our decisions. Which will kind of tie in with what Mr. Wheatley is gonna cover when he talks about how we're using that data to help kind of drive our, our interventions to hopefully increase some of our scores for our free reduced orders.
Questions? I just have a quick question, when you're looking at the tier level, is that a broad over all of the academic areas? Or, or what if there's maybe just a specific academic area? Can they fit in the different tiers, tiers just for that or is it more overall?
Yep, so we can kind of focus on really math and then language arts, reading. But right, you might be in tier one in one, in say, reading and maybe tier two in math. So it's just the data that drives it?
Or even, or even behavior. It could be a tier one kiddo in behavior and be tier three within reading. And so I, I think Mr. Bertram did a very, very nice job of describing it, because these are, these are things that that when you think, when you hear MTSS, think of an umbrella. MTSS is not one specific thing, so there's so many different layers or elements that go into providing the supports for our kids. And it goes into everything that he described and, and not one single layer or element is more important than the other, so it's a lot to really keep your head wrapped around in order to be able to make sure that you're tracking what you need to track and having the supports that are needed, it takes a bit of the truth out.
And just to piggyback with that, we have some kids that come in for, for breakfast and get social stories. So just stories on how to, how to interact with friends, how to make friends, how to keep friends, how to make choices. So that might be kind of a tier two for that social end and emotional learning. But yet, they might be in tier one for reading and math, so it's not an academic issue, it might be more of a social and emotional, so yeah, absolutely.
How do the teachers get training in this? I mean, I understand how, how this works and how they use this to drive data. How do the teachers know how to implement some of these?
Right, so we went through a training, this will probably answer this more than I can, I want to say about four or five years ago.
What, what he's describing is, is part of that, where when the state said you need to have MTSS, even just for, for staff, including myself, to wrap our heads around what goes into it, it's easy to look at it as the academic component. I, I can tell you that like the training, we had the, I think through the University of Minnesota. Press, it's a, it's a reading intervention series. And so the press training was something, I had a very, I had a group of four or five individuals that went to multiple trainings for that. Then we purchased the materials, then all the teachers got trainings on how to utilize those materials. And it's something like, every teacher got a cookie sheet and magnetic letters, so that when you had your manual and you knew where that student was testing and what their needs were, you could go to that specific intervention and we had the materials for that. So it's a, it's not a, we're gonna close the school down and do one big training. A lot of times in, in these types of areas, it's, it's bits and pieces coming together to coalesce to form one, one element of that. So it's, it's, I kind of feel like I gave you a non-answer, but that's really the way it works in school, is that a lot of times it takes one, two, three, four individuals to be able to say, I'm willing to go to do this and then just share that knowledge and kind of train a trainer and, and be able to disseminate the information that way.
Do teachers feel like it's ineffective? Do they feel like it's helpful?
It is, I, I think we, we, we probably talk more about the academic piece.
Yeah.
But we've got a sad team, a student assistance team. So when a teacher has a concern about any student, whether it's for emotional, social behavior, whether it's for academics, that student will get referred to that team. And that team then looks at what's our best strategy and then they give advice to the teacher on, you should try this, it might be press for reading, it might be a math intervention. It might be a positive chart, so we always start with unrewarding behavior, it might be stories that teach lessons. So it starts with the teacher, goes the sad team and then goes back. We go that first intervention, that's what we call the tier two, now we're in tier two. And then eventually, if that's not effective, then we go into tier three. So it kind of progresses through that.
It, it could even be something specific like Title One, which is originally created by the government in order to, because they realized there was correlation in reading scores with socioeconomic status. So there's some monies that we qualify for every year, that is our Title Two money. And that Title Two, I'm sorry, Title One is a tier two intervention with an MTSS. So that's a very specific element of MTSS that is, is not a broad spectrum attack. It's specific to those parents and that one or two teacher.
One more question.
Yeah.
Okay, ac- ac- academics probably very objective to be able to get a result in. What, can you give me just an example of a behavior? Because sometimes are there certain criterias that are listed? Sometimes that can be a little bit more subjective than objective for the person that's rating or ranking or whatever.
Yep, using what, what we'll see, it's not just, you know, someone made a bad choice during recess. But it's gonna be, they have a hard time controlling emotions, they get angry really quickly, they cry. They come to school, they're really shy, they don't want to talk to anyone, they sit by themselves. So those are the things that we kind of flag and, and try to provide some systems of, of support, like how do you teach those skills to interact with your classmates and peers?
And, and we could pull the data, we have a program called SWISS, costs three hundred dollars a year, but it, you can pile all the data into it. And, and then you can pull up the day of the week, the specific class, the area of the school. And so like I can tell you that historically through our, and this, the Swiss came about through our PBIS initiative that the hardest day of the week, you'd think it would, it would be either the beginning or the end of the week, Thursdays historically have been the highest day of behaviors that pop up. Doesn't make any sense, but you go through a week, you go, oh, it's Thursday. It's just a very real thing, I don't know if everybody just gets tired of being in school at that point or what, but it, it, you can pull lots of different information, instead of just going, this student is acting this way, it's like, well, when? You know, because coming out, some families coming into the school week after a long break or going into a long break creates some uncertainties for kids and then they come to school and they have to re-acclimate to being in a structured environment, or even, you know, food insecurity and those kinds of things that can get in the way and and kids don't even realize that that's having any impact on them, so.
Thank you.
You didn't think you could make that exciting. And John, he is still at all.
Could have thrown a couple jokes in there.
We got Jim for the commentary.
Thank you. Mr. Wheatley?
I'm, I'm not going to go over my report, I'll just, we had Willie gave some blood for us, that was great. And I just, my pictures are just highlighting some of the different things that we did, we had a good PD session. It's funny that, you know, you throw, you know, forty, some people went to the auditorium, it looks like we're really not doing a whole lot. We had breakout sessions, so we had a cultural competency speaker come in and so she had them break into different groups and cultural competency within the, the teaching world was a very, very important checkoff to have for your license, so it was wonderful. Mr. Bertram sent that out, so thank you to him for that. And then, and then I, I actually, I doing it, that'd be what I said I wouldn't do, so sorry. I am creating a, an AI PD and it's like being in the classroom all over again. And so getting people to think about their preconceptions and misconceptions about what artificial intelligence can, should, should not do in our lives is, it's fascinating where you can have those, those kind of unfiltered conversations with folks. And so the first one we had was just, just to, we kind of start wrapping our heads around how we're already using it, we don't even realize it. So you can say that you don't like AI, but if you're using Siri, got some bad news for you. And so it's things like that to where people go, oh, okay, my eyes are open a little bit more. So that five sessions, gonna be able to give some clock hours for that, it's a, it's an exciting thing, it feels good for me, I enjoy it. It's not just, I found this is kind of cool, I think you should hear about it, but for me to have my own time invested into, to creating it, talking about it, it's, it's fun and exciting, so. What I have to, to share with you tonight is a continuation of what Mr. Bertram was talking about earlier. So you remember last month, we talked about AI, we talked about World's Best Workforce, we talked about the graduation rates, which by the way, good news with the graduation rate thing, well, better news, we did not have to go to the session that MD wanted us to go to, so thank you to Superintendent Hall for that. So they were able to say, now we understand what happened. I don't know if there's been more dialogue about it, but, but it was very, very nice to not have to attend it because of the cluttered wear. So what I have for you today, what they decided to do after having it together for a couple of years is A&amp;I and World's Best Workforce were combined. So now, instead of listening to me talk about it once per year, you get to listen to me talk about it twice per year. A&amp;I is now in October and it's due on the thirteenth, so this counts as our public meeting for that. And then World's Best Workforce will continue as always to be shared at the December board meeting following the Truth and Action meeting. So I have just four slides for you and we have four goals and I'm gonna attack those and I'm sure you might have some questions. Again, this, just before we launch into it too much, is that this is all local data that we're looking at. There's, there's some money that's tied to it, because A&amp;I, the money we get for A&amp;I is tied to our proximity to Wilmer. And so with the diversity that Wilmer has and our proximity to that diversity, they want to know, because they know some kids will flow both directions. And then as I launch, as I talk about the, the bottom two goals in particular, those are more high school related, but the top two are more elementary related, so. So we have first goal is our free reduced reading source using local assessment data. For us, we use our FastBridge. In the past, you've heard Games Web, you've heard Star Testing and now we're using FastBridge. Goal two is the exact same thing, but it's looking at our math scores. And then you have goal three, which is integration goal, that's using data that's collected at the Wilmer STEM and Gamma camps that happen every summer, so hopefully you've heard about those. And then our goal before is related to our teacher equity and that's equity in training, more so than equity in personnel. And so that's something that we'll, we'll talk about that briefly also. And, uh, so that's something that we'll, we'll talk about that briefly also, so, at the next slide, please. So in goal one, these are results, results with the goal. So, um, our goal for the FRP reading was to have fifteen percent growth over three years. Now, this is a three-year plan. We are currently, I'm reporting on year two, we're in year three, so year three's numbers will be reported next October. Uh, so we look for fifteen percent growth over three years, we had one percent growth last year, we have one percent growth again this year. Okay, uh, to a degree, growth is growth is growth, uh, at the same time, it's very clear that we're not meeting that fifteen percent. Um, the fifteen percent in number two, that would be fifteen percent for the math scores. We actually, we went up one percent last year and then the numbers this year showed that we had a four percent reduction. So we're sitting, currently sitting at a minus three percent and in our math scores, again, not MCAs, which are reported to the state or by the state, these are our scores that are just our local data. Uh, goal number three, which would be grow three percent over, I'm sorry, five percent over three years and building relationships with, with new peers. Again, that's our kids going to Wilmer and, uh, and attending those two camps. Now, you say, well, why fifteen percent for those others and only five percent for this one? That's because we were already sitting at ninety-four percent. And when I say we, I mean the, it would be the A and I collaborative. So it's, I think, seven districts that go into that collaborative. And then goal number four would be growing eight percent over three years in academic standards training. So you may have heard, uh, about Learning Sciences International when Sherry was here, that was, we, we invested quite a bit of money into professional development for our staff. And talking about standards, success criteria and so on. And what we've done is we, um, have our experienced teachers who run our new teacher workshop. They have built that into the presentation that they give to new teachers, so it's, it's a quick hit. This is what you're gonna be doing, this is what success criteria look like, um, and this is what your learning targets should look like. So they have that exposure to it. Now, this last one is, uh, it's all based on attendance. So if we have a teacher or two who, uh, is new, but they're on a family vacation, I can't count them towards that percentage because they didn't go through the training at that time, and we have to do it at a different time. So, uh, we are at, uh, six percent, uh, positive, uh, for the, the two years that we've been in this school. So we're, we're looking okay on that one, so again, uh, will we hit a hundred percent? Hmm, maybe, um, but it depends on what our turnover, turnover looks like, so, so forth, so. Um, with that said, um, I'm sure you probably have some questions. I even for, for me to articulate right, right now, if I had to articulate some questions about what does this mean, what does this look like? Um, I will say this before I do turn it over to Mr. Bertram to a degree, is that, um, we have our interventions. Everything we're doing within the A and I and the World's Best Workforce for our scores is when we see needs that we have, we try to attack it with a plan. And just like when you try to attack a needs, any needs that a student has, if it doesn't work, it's imperative that you adjust, gather yourself and then attack it from a different direction. And I can tell you that, you know, even in, in, I'm in my ninth year now here in the district. And the integration of phonics, probably what, seven years ago or so, six years ago? That was an intervention that we tried to run in order to boost our scores. I was hoping that our scores would look differently by having phonics, because that was an area of need that we had at that point. Um, we still have phonics, it's just it looks very, I couldn't even bear, I couldn't even take the time to describe what phonics it's like at the elementary now because I've been out of it that long. Uh, but the numbers are not where we need to be, we've both acknowledged that. Uh, but I, I really, the, the direction that Mr. Bertram has with the MTSS and getting the feedback from the state, that's imperative that we, we get that feedback. Now, the last slide, uh, I have it labeled as brass tacks, so what's it mean? If we don't meet our goal? According to the state, they can, they can force us to use twenty percent of our A and I money, uh, and to go towards specific student interventions. If they have an idea on something that would work to help that, that's great. Because we're already putting our money into those interventions and we're trying to get the changes that we want. And so, uh, I think we're going to, uh, we're going to rewrite our goals, we have to develop a new plan. Um, lady by the name of, uh, Dendeka Chinze, uh, is the gallant state, who I worked with in developing this plan three years ago. She will be working with us again, we have to have free proof, we have to have books that are approved through Kim for our A and I. And, uh, and then we're going to utilize, um, Eric Schwanke, who's mainly works with the Service Cooperative, in order to have him help us write our goals. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure, they always want percentages, we want this much growth, five percent is really what they recommend every year. Um, I don't know, I don't have a math brain in order to know whether or not that's the right way to go about it. Because not all data has to be set percentages like that, so. It's an easy way for us to understand it and look at growth, but, um, I would say, I, I, without a doubt, I will say right now, our MTSS plan and the growth over the, over the years is exactly where we need to be. And we're not behind the curve on that at all. How we can make those changes though, that, that's really the question. And I'm leaving you with a really big hook there at the end, I, I, I don't have that answer. And he's doing a heck of a job in leading the, the elementary staff in order to try to make these changes, I can't tell you that.
Questions for Mr. Wheatley.
Your faces are exactly what I was expecting. And it's like, what we gotta do, and, and it's like, I, I, we gotta find something different. And we're gonna have some tough conversations.
Do we pick the fifteen percent or is that imposed on us?
That was the recommended number, five years, five percent per year is the recommendation. I would be more content with, you know, three percent or even two percent, just to a lot of gain or putting. They don't like that because they want more growth. I, I'd be happy with two percent, looking at this.
Especially if we have the negative number that we have.
Yes, yes.
Cause that really is digging out of the hole.
Yep, a hundred percent.
Well, I've already met with, with the team and, um, really requesting Eric partner with us because allegedly Eric isn't so much pushing numbers, but pushing student success. So we can get some goals that aren't tied directly to a number. Because each student's gonna have their own plan, their own growth, so let's look at different ways of putting it in, so we're not judged by a number, but truly on the success of our students, so.
And, and I don't wanna blame the product for this, but I can tell you when, when I was at the elementary, we had a system called AmesWeb. And that was for all of the elementary, and then that shifted to AmesWeb for K and one. And then STAR for two, three, four, five, six. And then it shifted to All-Star, I believe, not, not All-Star, but Complete Star Testing. And then it shifted to FastBridge, so we've been, we've been playing with different programs. And I would, I would assume that there's some learning curve for the kids behind it. And also when you're looking at the data, I can, without a doubt, third grade came to me when we went from just AmesWeb to AmesWeb and Star Data, and they said, this is apples and oranges right now, we don't know what's going on with this. And, and that's something that you have to fight through, so I think to a degree, we've got some of that going on. But, there's always a but, we're in our second year of FastBridge. And so why would you, you would think that, that turnover or the, the negative number would pop up more in year one of using a new product versus year two of the new product? So we've got some digging to do and potentially tough conversations they have, and it's all about reflection and figuring out we can do better with our craft.
So after next year, you have to reset goals, is that how that will go?
We will have a new one in place by, uh, springtime of twenty-six. And the state has to approve it, yeah, for another three years. And if they say, hey, we, we, we're gonna force you to use your, your twenty percent of your A and I money, great, what, what do we need? Keep us your expertise. But hopefully a refining of the goals and a, a slight tweak to them will help some.
What percentage are we using currently? Fifteen?
Oh, up for the goals.
No, the A and I money.
Oh, a hundred, we're using a hundred percent of it. At one point, at one point, the money was going to, uh, a, uh, reading intervention disposition that we had. So taking the, taking the twenties percent is like, okay, fine, we're, we're already spending the money for kids anyway. So if you have a program or another position or tweaking a position that we could better put the money towards, put us on.
And just something that I know from when I was a teacher, changing your math and reading series can make a difference, and we've done both of those in the last.
Yeah. We, we can definitely do better, but there's a lot of bumps in the way. When in year three math just starting, and that's where you start to see that growth. Uh, year two for reading with the open, open course, so we expected to see a little bit of dip last year, we should see that's moving up. If you use three different tests to collect data from Ames to now FastBridge. Um, and then it's looking at an average. To be honest, we had one grade that dipped and two grades that went up a little bit, but it doesn't look like that, it looks like we all dipped. So, uh, there's just lots of layers to look at, but the bottom line is we can do better and we will.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Bone.
Well, we've, we've had a great start of our school year. Um, as you know, the last month has been very busy. Uh, but before we begin with the, our new, uh, present state patient style, we gotta recognize it's Principal Awareness Month. We wanna recognize the hard work for both of our principals and appreciate everything they've been doing, so thank you both. Um, as you know, um, homecoming, um, was last week. So we started off, um, our new homecoming court, one of our senior students, um, worked together with us. And, uh, we made a little video, we have a new McCray School TikTok site. So, uh, Greg, you wanna start us off and see if you guys can know what? So that, um, started off the fun. Um, the senior, um, senior, Iris Dunner was the one who, um, created it, filmed it and then edited it. She brought in, we noticed we couldn't see one of the people in the back, so she blew it up. And that's what TikTok is, it's about fun and just bringing energy and, uh, great things going on. Uh, from there, um, you know, we had the homecoming court was introduced. And then we had some sidewalk chalk, Greg, you wanna show them some sidewalk chalk? Well, well, that's loading, the students were, um, coming together. Um, and they decorated all this, all the, they decorated the sidewalk and they voted, um. So you can see all the students, you know, different pictures involved, homecoming court. Um, from there, and then we had our walk, the community, all the fire departments, all the emergency services came up. And, uh, we walked from right past the Clara City area, the nice little park. We met there, the buses dropped off, and if the students wanted to, it was their option to participate. We walked or biked over and Greg has, this one will be. So once again, just upbeat music and, and fun for the kids, and it's all online for people to just go check out and, and see all the fun things. Now, every student was checked, um, who can and can't be on, so we worked with that. Greg was very careful to make sure I followed that one. And then for, uh, we had a big dance competition at the Pet Fest and the sixth grade won. So every student got to vote, they beat.
That's his first time covering the seniors didn't win.
Yeah, typically it's seniors win, but I don't know who counted the votes, but. And then we, you know, we ended off with, we had Willie, uh, the mascot at the game, um, Friday, um, to kick off the finals. So that was just last week, so hopefully we'll, we'll put more things as the students do well. Um, I, I love when the students participate, here's our whole homecoming part, um, as we hit the end. And I know, um, Mark, at our last meeting, you asked about the impact Franny's having. So Franny has been to three elementary or more classes already, but she's seen about fifty students a week. That's with, uh, very little missed class time, it's before school, after school, passing time. Kids just stop in and, and see her. Um, she, she listens very well, I, I try to get her not to see, you know, because, uh, I get nervous of what could happen. But I, I think we got very lucky with her temperament and the impact she's making, so that seems to be going well. Um, and then in your, your meetings, you're gonna say, um, I sent out on Friday a new format for board meetings. I'd really like this to start, um, if it's okay, of looking at our data and analyzing a class of meeting. So you saw, you know, that in November, that will be the class of, there'll be the fifth grade, the class of whatever it is. Um, and then we'll have specific data, hopefully a little video about them. But on that night, then you'll have the report from the high school principal, but he won't come that night. Because we wanna put all of our energy and the things with Todd, so you can ask some in-depth questions just about in this grade, fifth grade. And then we'll have our work, but World's Best Workforce, that means we have to have, and then John will hit sixth grade. Um, and then every, every month, we either have a big presentation or we'll hit a specific grade. But when we hit a specific class, so the class of twenty, twenty-seven, the opposite principal won't be here, but you'll get their board report. So before, I, cause that's coming up next to talk about board packets, the board reports. Any questions about us changing to that format? No concerns, so we'll try it and.
We'll try it, yeah.
Okay, then with that, um, hearing that you, it's time to reflect, we'd like to now send out board reports on Tuesdays, so a week before the board. So that'll give you all week to analyze it, so when we get to the board meeting, any prior questions would already be answered. Does that seem okay with everybody?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, really helpful.
Yeah.
Is that okay? All right, thanks, the team came up with it. So then with that, the next piece, so we have, will be, um, when you get information, so typically, I was, I would be getting the phone calls from your questions. But if the question is informational in nature about the board packet, I would request that the board, as long as it's informational and not confrontation, please call me anything. But if it's informational about the board packet, you call any of these four direct first, and they'll let me know you called. That way you can hear your information right from, let's say from Kim or from John or Todd. You can ask them what they put in their board report, so I don't become just a middleman, I don't, I don't need that. I'd rather just answer the questions if it gets past that. But if you can say, hey, I, I read this, I'm the fourth one down, it says, we, we went minus three, but it looks like we're really minus two, it's, it's something we can quick fix, and we fix it that week and we're all ready for the board meeting the next week. Are you comfortable with that? So if, if you think it's controversial, call me, it's informational, we're just gonna call them and they're gonna let me know.
Or if I don't know who to ask, I'm asked to.
Yeah, and I'm gonna say, please call them, and I'll let them know.
Or just email.
Yeah, you don't have to, but I, I know it'll be a change of how we did things, but I think it'll be, um, more streamlined. And you'll get the question you want answered without me, you know, it's like playing phone, I mean, I might say it wrong and then, I know Adam, I didn't mean to, all right, I'll call back. No, no issues with that one either? All right, we're going through it, all right, then, you have in front of you one of these. So this came out, I've noticed that, I found out, we have some people that have chose not to go to McCray that live in our boundaries. So I'd like to reach out when I find out about them, is to send this with an enrollment packet that, uh, we're here for you. We are McCray, we're always gonna be here for you if you ever wanna come back. But once again, it just highlights who we are, it's colorful, it, it represents us. I'm gonna change one more photo, but I gotta get a, find the right one, but this all from our website. Um, but I want people to know we are the school district of choice. We are who we are, you can, if you're from a different school, you're their school district, that's fine, you can think that, but let's just have a conversation why we're, we're, we feel we're the best. We're not gonna put others down, but we're. We're not going to put others down, but we're sure going to brag about who we are. Okay? No, no issues? Is that okay with everybody? I won't, if you guys say that, don't cross, I won't do it, but.
I think it's great. I think that's an important aspect, and I think a lot of times, especially just kind of being out and about, there's some things that I hear that I'm surprised. I'm like, I don't think that's right. You know, they have something that built up in their head from maybe something they heard a long time ago. So, I think circling back and revisiting some of those families, I think it's a great, a great thing.
And last but not least, we've had a community member receive an honor flight. So, we have a World War II veteran. His name is Bob Bricks. He lives in our community. And he took an honor flight, and I'm going to have somebody talk more about the specifics because he knows more about it. But the key part was our students stepped up in unbelievable ways. They asked for a couple of letters that they could do on this mail call. And we came through, I bet it was close, maybe it's, I'm seeing too many, but it was over thirty, I felt. It was a stack from sixth graders to elementary students. But the students would tell me in the hall, hey, I wrote the letter. Did he get it yet? This was like a week ago. I know, he's just, he's going. But so they were invested in it. They knew about it, and it wasn't just something you checked off, but they took pride in it. And so, Ben, do you mind sharing more about it, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So, my dad was able to take Bob Bricks on this honor flight. And I kind of, he just got back late last week, and I haven't had a thorough time to sit down and hear all the stories. But I have just bits and pieces, and he did, he did share some pictures. You're not going to be able to see this, but this is one of Bob Bricks holding up one of the thank yous. I read through some of the thank yous, some of the thank you, one that really stood out. It said, Dear Mr. Bricks, B-R-I-C-K-S, and it's spelled with an X, so that's kind of funny. So, maybe that contributed to the negative two. But that's a name. I don't claim him on the. Oh, but, but it said, you know, thank you so much for your service. In the last line, it said, you are my hero. And it was just, it was neat. And so, my dad has been over now, I think, twice since they got back over to Bob, and they haven't even gotten halfway through all the letters. I saw the stacked letters. It was more than thirty for sure. It was, it was like inches high. And so, that was a really neat thing that, that Bob was able to do, that my dad was able to accompany him with that. Bob was actually a medic at Keeljima, and they were able to visit that, that memorial. And yeah, I'm excited to hear more about kind of the details of it, but it was a really neat thing. And so, what they did is they do this thing called mail call, just like they had, you know, back in the war, they would have mail call. And it was a big thing for them back then, and they tried to implement that. So, when we reached out to the school, they jumped on, and within a week or so, had all these letters. So, it was a really, really meaningful thing. And I believe Bob's going to be coming for Veterans Day too. I think that's maybe still in the works a little bit, but that they're trying to get him to come and talk about that too. But a hundred and one, and still a sharp attack, so.
But just another way where real life experiences will go a lot farther than just doing something out of a work.
And they say they're losing like nine hundred World War II vets a day. So, I mean, within just a few years, we will not have any of the, you know, the truly the greatest generation. Yeah.
That's great, too. I think it teaches the kids about that social capital, about giving back to communities and how you're invested in your communities.
Yeah.
That just warms my heart to hear that.
Yeah.
And we do on November eleventh, Veterans Day, hopefully we'll make it. But we also have a legislature coming that day, read a book to the student, get welcomed by the mascot. And then, we've been doing more, we've had one, but we're going to do a student panel. So, if you guys, I know we can only have three, but I'll get you, as soon as, we're waiting for one more legislature to get back on their date for sure. Hopefully, you have two. If you want to come, we'll just have a sign up sheet so we don't, either that or we got to notice it. But by noticing it, that means we're going to check. I don't want too many people in our home weeks. I just, they want to read some books to some students, do a student panel. But as you know, you're always welcome. We just have to follow the guidelines. Any questions for me? Can I, now, are you okay with, if everybody has pictures like this every meeting, is that, do you like that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll keep with that. Trulock's really been pushing me on it, so we're going to, he really wants more photos. So, thank him for that because it's been a pleasure to get it done. Thanks, Mr. Trulock.
And I love making TikToks. A hundred and twelfth time he asked me, I had to give in.
Thank you. Okay, on to our next six point two, any committee reports? Nada? Six point three, board discussion, twenty-one eighty donor board.
I can talk about this one.
I've got a, I made a sheet for you.
Oh, great.
It's just a picture that you.
Yeah.
With the dimensions.
Yeah, so, just kind of putting my twenty-one eighty hat on or kind of giving a little more information on it. The twenty-one eighty foundation is working on, I don't know if anybody even really knows. It's there, there's a donor board in the hallway, kind of next to the library area. It's an old, it's an old one plaque. And the foundation just wants to do a better job recognizing the donors that have given a lot of money to the, to the foundation over the years. And then also kind of spruce up some of the hall space. So, the picture is actually just to the left of the concession stand in the high school commons. And it will be that pretty large kind of metal background. And then the McCray M. on the right. And then to the left, this K&amp;J branding will put like the blue and green vinyl kind of sticker on the wall. And then, the foundation will then later on add the TV. And with the TV, it'll just be rolling pictures of things that the foundation has donated money towards. And then, within that too, like on the donors, we can more readily update, like who donated, how much, kind of move along the different categories of, you know, thousand dollars, two thousand, kind of along that. So, that way, the group just feels it's going to be a better way to recognize and thank our donors in a much more kind of public way. And then also service kind of some marketing too, and try to get more interest in people donating.
And the foundation is using probably the premier Division One high, this company, this is what they do is market.
Yeah. They do a really nice job.
Have a whole standout which will meet the aesthetics as you walk into that auditorium area. So, it's not, this should pop very a lot.
Is there any questions about that? As far as just kind of awareness also, this doesn't all pop up.
Thank you.
Do we have to, don't you want to send them some money, don't you?
We, with the foundation, will pay for it, yes.
But do you want to have, does the board need to approve the allocation of accepting this donation so you can give them the money to keep going? But once it comes here, it'll be, we have to still approve that it comes to us, that we're going to accept to put it in school.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, so that's, so we will, we want to, we want to motion to accept the donation from the foundation before, I don't want.
Well, we, we have money set aside in the dormant that, that comes up, so that's still.
But I think you're saying like, then does it kind of become the school, like we're donating?
We're approving that this is going to go in our school.
Should I just put it on next month's consent agenda?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that all right?
It won't be done before next month, no. We'll, we just wanted to.
I just want to make sure we do.
Yeah, I get it.
Everything that comes to.
The twenty-one eighty is donating to the school.
Any other questions at all? Thank you, Mark.
Yeah.
Get that on next month's agenda. All right, on to seven point O, business item, action required. The first one is a resolution authorizing the sale of the football field in Marshall. And it doesn't say who it's going to, correct me if I'm wrong. But it's just a resolution that says we're going to open it up to sell it, the property. Yeah, we have to have that prioritated sale.
We're selling Marshall's football field?
Does he, Marshall? Maynard?
We are not going to have anybody.
You tell where I was today? So, is there a motion? Just remember, if you make the motion, you read the resolution saying.
I'll make a motion and just.
Thank you, Mark. Mark made the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do you want to read the motion, and then we can have any discussion?
Yep. Okay, so pursuant to due call and notice thereof, a regular meeting of the school board of independent school district number twenty-one eighty McCray Public Schools was held in the school district on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five commencing at six o'clock P.M. The following board members were present. Julie's absent. So, resolution authorizing the sale of certain school district property in the city of Maynard, Minnesota. Whereas independent school district number twenty-one eighty. Push the wrong button. Got it back. McCray Public Schools, the school district is a public school corporation and political subdivision duly formed and organized pursuant to Minnesota law. And whereas the school district owns a parcel of land in the city of Maynard, Minnesota, the city that is depicted and legally described in the attached exhibit A, the property. And whereas in the past, the property was used as the school district's football field for high school football games. But since the relocation of all school facilities in Clara City, Minnesota, the property has generally been used for school, has not been used for school purposes. And whereas the school board finds and determines that the property no longer serves an educational purpose in the school district, therefore, the property is deemed to be surplus property. And whereas selling the property will result in saving, savings to the school district in the form of avoidance of expense for the upkeep and maintenance of the property. And whereas the administration has reviewed the conditioned value and potential use of the property and recommends that it be sold in a manner consistent with Minnesota law. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number twenty-one eighty as follows. Number one, the school district administration is hereby authorized to sell the property through any sale method permitted by law. The administration is further authorized to separately sell or dispose of any fixtures on the property, including the lighting, in accordance with applicable law, under such terms and conditions as are deemed reasonable and appropriate by the administration. Number two, the property shall be sold as is with no warranties expressed or implied. The district reserves the right to reject any and all offers deemed in the best interests of the district. Number three, in the event of a suitable purchase of the property identified, the school district administration is authorized with the advice and assistance of the school district's legal counsel to prepare a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the property, which shall contain such terms and conditions as are deemed reasonable and appropriate by the administration. Number four, the board chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute and deliver said purchase agreement as well as the deed and all other instruments, agreements, and certificates necessary to complete the conveyance of the property to the purchaser.
Any questions? I guess I just have one. Is there already a predetermined, like how we're, the method of sales, or we can just?
Yeah, I'm working with the lawyer about that. He is insisting that, well, the law says we have to sell it for fair market value. So, I'm trying to figure out how to determine fair market value. Reached out some appraisers, and they haven't backed me yet.
That's interesting. Why, why would it be different than selling a building that we did have to?
Because, yes, because in the Maynard situation, we were avoiding huge costs of teardown, maintenance, stuff like that. And we were selling it to another public entity. And so then, as long as we were selling, selling it to another public entity for public use, that was okay to do it for a nominal amount. But since that has happened, they've sold it to a developer. And so, it looks like they were just a pass through, so we can't do that again this year, or this time. Which we had no clue. I mean, they had no clue this was going to happen either. It wasn't, it wasn't predetermined that this would happen. It's just happened, you know. But the lawyers said we have to at least attempt to get fair market value.
So, if a public entity would be interested in it, can we do a nominal fee and then put a caveat in there that it cannot be like a pass through?
Possibly. We may have to do that, but I don't know. We'll see. Yeah.
When, when we sell property like this, what happens to the funds? Does that go into the general fund? Does that go out?
Other questions?
I guess I can add, we were working with the light pole company to possibly sell the, to make a little.
And so, the light, that's why I think number two, it says anything, so we're, hopefully we'll have that done before the sale would go through. Two separate things. We can't use the money that we make from the lights to offset the cost of the land. And we can't legally be a pass through, knowing. So, we're just going to follow the guidance of the lawyer. Go to the Maynard City meeting after this. I'll share that with them if they ask.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll call for a vote. This is a voice vote. Ben?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carmel?
Yes.
I'm a yes. All right, thank you. Next one is for a resolution of governing board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State. S L, High School League Foundation.
I can make that motion?
Thank you, Carmel. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. We have a motion, a second. Carmel, you want to do the honors?
Resolution of governing board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of McCray Public School District twenty-one eighty recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and finance programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of McCray Public School District twenty-one eighty supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees.
Thank you. Three questions. Hearing that? Okay, it's called for a vote. Ben?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carmel?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Resolution passes. Seven point four, recent policy five twenty-two. And replace that policy with the twenty twenty? Oh, jeepers, marshall. Spider me, okay. Julie can't be gone. All right, the cooperative, a resolution for hockey cooperative with Wilmer. Rescind the Marshall. There's hockey cooperative. Do we have a motion for that? Thank you, Mark. Second?
John.
John, I'm sorry. Any questions? Conversation.
Who's second, Bill?
I, I will, yeah.
And I missed whose, who did it?
John and Mark. This is the one that Jim just said about a little bit earlier. I think it was sent out separately, wasn't it, Jim?
Say again?
You sent it out separately, the hockey cooperative?
I only sent the state high school league one to you. I sent the agreement from Wilmer there.
Okay.
Do we have like the resolution?
I can just say what's on the page, we didn't have the resolution, I don't, did you have, we didn't have a resolution, but it said by resolution, so just say.
Tom, that was a good one.
Yeah, good job, John.
Yeah.
All right, the resolution, um our school board is authorizing rescinding cooperative for boys hockey with Marshall Schools and joining a boys hockey cooperative with Wilmer Schools.
Thank you, that was easy. Any questions? Comments? Right, we'll call the board?
I, I guess, uh my, my only question was just how, how similar it was as far as the, the payment, but we're, we're under the impression that as far as it's, it seems to be very equal.
Not gonna cost them a great district, this family has agreed since it's, I hate to say, but in kind of a favor to them, cause we did offer that, that they're willing to pick up the expense, um and this will be a little different expense for them than what Marshall was, Marshall was a straight five hundred dollar fee. Here, they're going to do the same as gymnastics, they're gonna take all the expense that this program costs, divide it by the number of hockey players and then prorate it that way.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was similar to gymnastics.
Or do exactly the same thing.
So I'm a yes.
Yes.
Mark, John?
Yes.
Carmel?
Yes.
I mean, yes.
If I can comment one more thing I missed from my board report, when I talked to their athletic director today, he put out a plea almost that their numbers of hockey are, are low. They don't have a JV boys team, they're struggling to have a girls team, and they said, if you have any girls that would wanna play hacky- hockey, we would go into an agreement with you tomorrow, just to try to be able to help our numbers go along, and I said, I wouldn't tell the board that, and just so it's kinda out there that it's, it is an offer, it's on the table, and they would love to have us if we had anybody with any interest.
Okay, now on to seven point four, rescinding policy five twenty two. The dates are Title Nine Sex Non-Discrimination of twenty twenty four and replace the policy five twenty two with Title Nine Final Rule from twenty twenty two. Okay, oh, this is twenty twenty?
Yeah, I'll ask.
Sorry about that. So, Mr. Holmes, would you like to explain that, please?
There, everybody got this in their packets, this describes why we need to do it, because it was a federal court issued a decision vacating the federal twenty twenty four final rule on Title Nine, consistent with the court orders. The twenty twenty four regulations are not effective in any jurisdiction, including Minnesota, this comes from MSBA. This is what they're recommending us to do, is to go back to what we had in twenty twenty two, even though when Josh was just here, just redid this, they recommend that we do this, but now with this new federal court ruling, they just want us to rescind it, but you have to do it by voice vote. That's, so we'll just go back to what we had in twenty twenty two, and in a year from now, when they give us more guidance, we'll do more changes.
Questions at all? Again, voice vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we gotta have a motion. Would like to read that?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Mark, second?
I can send one.
Carmel, second? Any other discussion? Voice vote? Ben?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carmel?
Yes.
I'm a yes. All right, here's the one that we added to the agenda, seven point five resolution to do a fund balance transfer from the general fund, zero, five, four. And that is a community ed fund, this is kind of an annual thing that we do every year to zero it out. So wondering, again, we don't have a written resolution, can we just read that?
Yep.
Yep, so would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Carmel, second?
Very.
Thank you. Any discussion after Carmel reads it?
Uh here's a resolution authorizing a fund balance transfer from the general fund to zero out a negative fund balance in Fund Four in the amount of ninety thousand, ten dollars, forty six cents.
Can, just cause I'm new, can you just give me just a little bit more background that's uh?
Yeah, community ed
Community ed.
tends to run in the hole because we have a small population and the funding for that is per um pupil and per, it also has to do with the population of our area, so um we overspend a little bit in community ed because we have such awesome community ed stuff. And to pay the people to help run that, it, it ends up whatever, we, we're in the hole, ninety thousand this year. Um so what we can do is just take general fund money and supplement that. Preschool, we were good, so we're making progress there, but um.
Is a lot of that negative balance come from just from preschool or?
No, this, we got preschool to balance out this year. With some extra funds we got, yeah. Summer rec is a huge, maybe so.
Yeah.
You know, cause we, we don't charge nearly cover, yeah, to cover our expenses, so that's a lot of it and.
Is that common in a lot of school districts?
Smaller ones, yeah.
Sure.
But don't ask him.
She says that, cause uh St. Paul, my job was to build the fund balance, so when I left, it was over nine hundred thousand.
Yeah.
But seventy thousand um population.
Oh, sure.
So that's.
Big, bigger things.
Yeah, so we, all that money would come in, so we could still offer. But totally, if not, this philosophy of inclusion is, is better than the philosophy of charging everybody.
Is this a typical amount that has to be right now? Or would you say it's about?
This is quite a bit less, you have like.
Yeah.
Ten hundred thousand.
Yeah.
My families would participate if prices were high, it's a way to keep kids and people involved.
It's a very worthwhile.
Absolutely, investment.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second, and let's call more. Yep, a vote, Ben?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carmel?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Or resolution period. All right, upcoming meetings, a regular board meeting Monday, November seventh at six. Truth and taxation, Monday, December eighth at six, and then the regular board meeting will follow that. And then, ooh, we get into twenty twenty six, Monday, January twelfth, six o'clock.
I had one question, we had an MSBA.
Yeah.
At four thirty at Sunday.
Next week.
Next week.
Is it?
Yeah, good for us.
Okay.
So it's not listed on here, is there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We'll have to get that posted. Both superintendent hiring meeting with MSBA, Monday, October twentieth, four thirty to five thirty.
Four thirty to five thirty? Well, four thirty it starts, probably your calendar, okay, Monday, October twentieth. I will get that, we'll work on getting that posted.
Then we're gonna go.
Yeah.
All righty, with that, is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
John, thank you, second?
Second?
Carmel? Meeting adjourned, yeah. All in favor? Okay, we're not.
I knew you could win, but I did not know your name.